I'd like to call the Monday, May 11th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. First, I would like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, we have a special group of Julia Bancroft students from the Diamond Crystals Robotics Team who is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you. So, we have no public comments, so our first order of business tonight is recognizing the achievements of the Julia Bancroft Diamond Crystals Robotics Team. And with us tonight is Principal Lopez, and I am going to let you say a few words and then let the boys introduce themselves and say a few words about their experience through this process.
We're happy to be here. Thank you for having us. It's been a fantastic journey, starting as a small robotics team, the first elementary in Auburn, and making our way to the World Championship in Louisville, Kentucky. And I think the boys will have much to explain and can probably do a better job than most in explaining their talents and their journey in this great experience.
Great. So you can put the microphone a little lower. You're on television.
(inaudible) and how the robotics club started was Mrs. Lloyd picked the people from Mrs. Barber's class and one other student. And twenty-two out of those students had signed up. And how we, how our team got together was we had to write somebody's name on a card that we wanted them to be on our team, and we pretty much all just picked each other to be on our team. And the team name, Neil started Diamond because he was talking about Minecraft, and then Ralph added Crystal. So we became the Crystal Diamonds. And six of the components that were in the competition were, you had to drive with just your team, so two people from your team had to drive, which was called skills. And then you could also drive with another team, so two people from one team and two people from another team. And then autonomous when, is when you program it to move on its own, and you try to get the highest score possible. We also had the STEM research presentation, and we did that on wind turbines. And the engineering notebook is where we had written how we had built most of the plows and our, um, our autonomous. And the, and the last thing was the inspection, so to see if your robot was, um, qualified to enter the competition.
Excellent. Great job.
I'm Peyton Skopetsky, and the rules of the game were your, your robot had to be in a certain area where no parts could be sticking out or anything, otherwise you get disqualified and you couldn't play. And you also had, it was a sixty-second match, and you had to switch at thirty seconds. So there was a driver switch, and you had to switch controllers to your partner. And if you stepped, you had to push blocks from one side of the course to the other side of the course, and there was thirty-six blocks. And if you stacked the blocks on the right base block of the right color, you could multiply the amount of points.
Nice job.
I'm Ralph Capaldi. We first had to enter at Quigg-Sitteman College. We met a lot of teams all over Massachusetts, from like Boston to Auburn, all around. We were partnered with teams that we had never met before, so we didn't know any of their skills and anything. We were rookies. We had no clue what was going on. This is where, this was our first time. So it was unbelievable to be chosen, to get the Excellence Award. We were all very proud of ourselves, and we were just amazed by how well we did and how everyone else here was supporting us.
Great job.
Hi, I'm Nathan Madoff. And we had to get fundraising for us to go to Kentucky, and our goal was to get four thousand five hundred. So when we had to do the fundraising, we had done it in a short amount of time, and we had sent it out through emails, Facebook, like texts. And then we raised more than expected, so we got over five thousand dollars.
Wow. Great job.
And when we went to the bus ride down to Kentucky, it was like very crowded. It wasn't just our team on the bus. There was like people from Vex U, like there was like so many people. And there was TVs on the bus, but unfortunately, they did not work.[365.02][365.02](laughter) And we only had, and we only made one stop on the way down for breakfast, because we had traveled from midnight from like to two in the afternoon.
Wow.
And on our way there, we saw like lots of farms and valleys with flowers, and it was fun all the way down.
Great experience, huh? Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Anthony, and it took two days and seventeen hours to go by car there or bus. It took one day by plane. And to get to, and when we got there, we were very surprised to see green leaves on trees.[421.22][421.22](laughter) I have here. My hotels. Um, there are many teams there that came from twenty-nine different state countries, and also teams from other countries, for example, China. Um, and there were souvenir, and each team had a booth, and they each had, and they each could have souvenirs. One of the examples was food or likes, or like a bracelet that they had made from their own country. And we each had our own booth that we got to decorate. How we decorated ours was with a diamond and blue and white ribbon, ribbons on the side. Um, what we got there is very nerve-wracking. When we had to stand with a partner and strategize with the other team. So if we had a good strategy and worked, and it worked, we could get lots of points. But if it didn't work, we could get less points. And the way we could make it work is by practicing with the other team on the practice field.
Excellent.
Hello, my name is Neil, and so we were asking the people in charge of this whole thing if we could have an opportunity to help out. So Mrs. Lloyd asked if we could help, and we got the job of resetting the field that you play on after matches. And we set up the course many times, and we were able to get volunteer gifts for doing this all. We got like badges, shirts, water bottles, sunglasses, and bracelets. Um, so yeah, it was very good being a volunteer. It was fun. Also kinda scary at first, but we got used to it. And then there was next year's game details about the whole entire game for 2015 to 2016. Um, there's a ramp with balls, I think probably about ten or something. And when you have your robot, you have to knock it off a ramp, and each ball knocked off is one point. Um, and then there was a scoring zone, which is like this pole, and if the balls go over the pole, that's just one point. Um, and then there's this blue bin that you have to toss the balls into called the money bank, and each ball tossed into it is three points. And then at, before the end of the game, it's one minute long, um, you have to park your robe, well, you could, um, you have to park your robot on the ramp that earlier you knocked the balls off. And the first robot put on the ramp is ten points. If this, if the second robot goes on the, parks on the ramp, it is fifteen points. So if both robots are parked on, it's a total of twenty-five points. So this year, next year's game, there's a lot of ways to score points, but it gets hard. Um, so yeah, it's very, it'll be very fun, probably nerve-wracking and scary again, but pretty much it's totally fun, is my idea.
Great job. Great job.
In summary, I think the, the Excellence Award, all of the components of the robotics team, you saw a lot of, or heard a lot of the details of the game itself, but they took basically what was nuts and bolts and pieces and parts and figured out a way to put these pieces together to form their basic robot. Then, in addition to that, learn the skills of driving, programming, and use all the mathematical science, technology, and engineering to then become experts at their, at their game. And in working in collaboration with other teammates, because it's a collaborative effort, they were able to get great amounts of points, and they learned so much. It was just a tremendous experience, and they did an outstanding job. And I couldn't say enough about their coach, Mrs. Lloyd, who couldn't be here tonight, a parent volunteer who really steam-headed this initiative. She came to me, had broached me on this. I got the donations made, and through the help of Quinn-Sigumon Community College, they helped set us up, and I was able to offer that Julia Bancroft, and these boys ended up going to the World Championship.
Awesome.
So it was really exciting.
Congratulations.
Thank the Auburn public also, who was extremely supportive of these boys and their families getting there.
Congratulations.
Did you guys bring us a picture of your robot?
We could have done a whole presentation for you, but I wasn't sure of the format. They could, they could talk. They had their bulleted points because they wanted you to know the details of what they had to do.
Well, congratulations to all of you clearly. You know, just the little presentation you did for us here tonight shows your commitment to this, and congratulations to all the parents and siblings and family members who are here to support them. So you did a great job, and we have a couple presentations for you. I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Holstrom to read the proclamation from the Board of Selectmen, then I have a couple proclamations from the state.
First, before I do, congratulations. I think this is outstanding. Your team has put the little town of Auburn, Massachusetts, Choosits, on the worldwide map, and that's an outstanding achievement, and it shows that the Auburn schools and the Auburn kids are gonna go places, and congratulations. Well done. And the proclamation for you, whereas the Auburn Board of Selectmen wishes to recognize the outstanding achievements of Auburn's youth, and whereas academic excellence through hard work and perseverance is a worthy effort to acknowledge and for all who emulate, and whereas the Julia Bancroft Diamond Crystal Robotics Team has exemplified tremendous dedication and teamwork and won the top Excellence Award at the Southern New England Regional VEX-IQ High-Rise Challenge Robotics Competition in Worcester, Massachusetts. And whereas the Excellence Award earned the team the honor of competing in the VEX Robotics World Championship 2015 in Louisville, Kentucky. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, do hereby proudly congratulate and recognize the Julia Bancroft Diamond Crystal Robotics Team for their outstanding accomplishments this year. And it's signed by the Chairman, Doreen Goodrich, myself, the Vice Chair, Kenneth Holstrom, Members Stephen Simonian, Daniel Carpenter, and Denise Brotherton. Again, thank you and well done.
Yeah.
Congratulations.[880.44][880.44](applause)
I, I also have a couple citations from the state, but I'm gonna open it up to comments from Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Simonian if they want to say anything, because we'll do the citations, then we'll invite them up for a photo if they'd like.
Cool. Well, thank you for being here, and as Mr. Holstrom said, putting us on the map again. All I could think of is Robert Goddard and how many generations he inspired, so I just wanna say it's great to see you here, and I just hope that the work that you're doing now will, you'll be our next, all of you will be our next Robert Goddard. So thank you very much for everything you did, and congratulations.
Anyone else? Mr. Smalley?
I guess there's really not much else to say. That's, that's unbelievable that what you guys accomplished, not just the, not just going, the fundraising, everything you did. And it's incredible, just incredible. It's first year, right? You guys said you're rookies at this, so everybody's looking forward to next year, right? Learned a lot, so you know, you know how to, how to get them next year, right? Awesome. Great job. Great job.
So, so I have from Senator Michael Moore, who couldn't be here tonight, but I think this'll go nicely in your new case, in your new school, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate, an official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Julia Bancroft Elementary School Diamond Crystals Robotics Team in recognition of winning the top Excellence Award at the Southern New England Regional VEX Challenge and therefore earning the privilege of competing in the VEX Robotics World Championship in Louisville, Kentucky. And be it further known that the Massachusetts State Senate extends best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It's signed by Senate President Stanley Rosenberg and proudly offered by our State Senator Michael Moore. And I understand that you have all, also received an individual citation from Senator Moore, so congratulations. And I have from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Julia Bancroft Elementary School Diamond Crystals Robotics Team in recognition of winning the top Excellence Award at the Southern New England Regional VEX Challenge and competing in the VEX Robotics World Championship. It's proudly offered by State, by State Representative Paul Frost and signed by the Speaker of the House, Robert DeLeo. So congratulations, you guys are hot shots.[1055.44][1055.44](applause) And if, if you guys, if you guys all wanna come up here, you can, you can all come up here and face that way, and we'll do some pictures. Yeah. So just come up and stand right in front of us, and we'll move in together. So one of you can hold this in front of you, and one of you can hold this and face that way, and one of you can hold this and face that way, and one of you can hold this. And I guess you're the tall guy, so you can come back here. Everyone look that way, and we're gonna do a picture.
Selectmen, move to your class, so you're sort of centered on the screen.
Okay.
Everybody's gotta look over here with all your moms and dads and everything else. Come to one line, okay?
Great. So if you just wanna turn around, we'd like to shake your hand and congratulate you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well done, guys.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations, Mr. Capaldi. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And congratulations.
Well done. Congratulations to you. Well done.
And I'll entertain a motion for just a brief recess.
Congratulations. Well done. Thank you.
I'm so glad you came, man. Much.
Congratulations. Motion to recess.
So just a quick motion to recess while they can get ready.
Second.
We're in recess for too many. So you guys can, can go. Thank you for coming. I know you all have to get home and do your homework and, and get to bed, but thank you for coming.[1155.83][1155.83](applause) I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Our next order of business is to recognize Mr. Dennis Natoli for his years of service on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Dennis, I'd like you to come up and sit with us.
Hello, Dennis.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
So for those of you who don't know, this is Dennis Natoli, who was former chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals and longtime member, just under twenty years?
Yep.
Just under twenty years of service to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So as we did with the robotics team, we'd also like to, once it quiets down in the hall a bit, excuse me one minute.[1201.83][1201.83](laughter) Sorry about that. Wanna make sure you get your, do recognition. So Mr. Natoli served on the Zoning Board of Appeals for almost twenty years. So first, I'm gonna open up to board members, starting with Mr. Carpenter, who'd like to say a few words.
Well, good evening, Dennis. Welcome, and I'm very sorry to see you go, but very happy to see that you did get over the wall, 'cause I know it's a very hard thing to quit.[1230.02][1230.02](laughter) But thank you. There's not enough words or anything that we could do to thank you for what you've done for the town, what a resource you've been for the business community, the residents, and your fellow board members, and, you know, if we could clone you, we'd, we'd be all set. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smalley?
Dan's opening comment, it's like the Shawshank Redemption.[1254.44][1254.44](laughter) Twenty, how many years? Twenty on the nose?
Yeah.
Twenty? It's an incredible chunk of your life that you dedicated to the town. I, I don't know what you're gonna do with all the free time, but I'm sure you probably have something planned. Um, you know, on behalf of all, everyone I know who has commented about your time, you know, thank you for everything that you've done, for what you've dedicated to the town, the years of service, and, and beyond that. I know that people don't always see the time that's not spent sitting in the chair here and the research and the things that you have to learn and have to do to be able to come here and do what you did. So for all of it, for all that time, for all the dedication, all the service, thank you. Thank you.
Dennis, for myself, thank you very much. I know that over the course of time, the Zoning Board of Appeals has had so many different issues, and it's a very, very difficult thing to weigh all the aspects of the projects coming on board and to be able to smooth it out and get people what they need to keep businesses going. And you've been able to do that over the course of the years, and again, thank you. That's a real project, a great achievement, and you know what? The town has lost an asset. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So I'm sitting here, I'm thinking twenty years, and our boys are about twenty-four years old now, so we go back that far, 'cause Dennis and I were co-coaches for the under five and under six, and did we go to seven? At least under five and under six, we co-coached. And, and you were just starting out on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it just, it says so much about, about our volunteers. Tonight, it's about you, but our volunteers, because it's people like you who start out, you know, maybe coaching a soccer team or, or, you know, a Cub Scout leader or something like that, and you just make the commitment to volunteer to a community that you love, and you've done that. You volunteered with youth, you volunteered with the Zoning Board of Appeals, you've served on different committees, and, and you've made a difference. And with the Zoning Board of Appeals, you didn't just attend your meetings, you know, monthly. You continued, and you understood the importance of continuing your education and attending seminars, because rules and regulations change. And I think sometimes we get comfortable in the seats we're in and forget that we, we don't know it all, and there's always something new to learn, and I, you know, you didn't forget that, and you, you continued to, to, to attend all of these training sessions offered. So congratulations and thank you for, for twenty years of service. And before I let you speak, I'm gonna have Mr. Holstrom read a proclamation that we've prepared. I'm gonna give you a chance to say a few words, and I know that we have some Zoning Board of Appeals members current and past, so if anyone wants to say anything, just give me a little sign, and I'm happy to let you speak.
From the Board of Selectmen, the proclamation to you, Dennis, whereas the Auburn Board of Selectmen takes great pride in recognizing residents for their long-term service to the community, and whereas Mr. Dennis Natoli has given selflessly of his time and talents to the town of Auburn, and whereas Dennis Natoli served on the Zoning Board of Appeals from July 28th, 1997, to June 30th, 2013, as both member and chairman, and from October 28th, 2013, to March 16th, 2015. Whereas Dennis Natoli's civic dedication and tireless efforts exemplify a true citizen of Auburn and should be emulated by all citizens. And now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, the Town of Auburn, Massachusetts, recognize Dennis Natoli and sincerely thank him for his many years of service on behalf of the Auburn community. Given by Chairman Doreen Goodrich, myself, Vice Chairman Kenneth Holstrom, Members Stephen Simonian, Dan Carpenter, and Denise Brotherton.[1511.66][1511.66](applause)
Is there anyone? Is, is there anyone who wants to say anything? Well, we're going to, we're gonna turn it up.[1515.66][1515.66](laughter) Are there any Zoning Board of Appeals members who are here or anyone who wants to say anything? Please, come on up to the podium. You do have to give your name for the record.
My name's Richard Cussy. I would just like to tell Dennis that it was a pleasure working with you, learned a bunch from you. I'm still here, and it was just a fantastic experience to work with you. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, I'll open it up to Mr. Natoli.
First of all, I'd like to say it's really been an honor and a privilege, actually giving the opportunity to be on the board. People that are out there, so many of them, they give their time, their expertise, and it's, to work with them has been, has been a rewarding experience for me. And anyone thinking of volunteering, I would recommend it because you'll stick with it like I, like kind of I have. Because of the rewarding experience that it actually is, you'll, you get to mingle with so many good people in town. You get a lot of support from the boards and employees in town, and time, I can't believe it's been this long. I mean, it flew by really fast. I remember when Dan first started on the, on the planning board. Again, it's something that, it takes a whole committee, and I think the new members, I have a lot of respect for, they're, the town is in good hands, so I feel good about, about leaving there. They're very articulate, they know and understand the bylaws while embracing the changes that are happening in the town, which is really important. So I feel I leave the town in good hands. Again, it's been a pleasure. If I didn't wanna spend just more time with my family at this point, I'd stay, but I've, it's been a long, a long hoe and a long trip, and it's, again, an enjoyable one. Certainly, I would recommend this to anyone in town.
Would you like to recognize your lovely wife?
My lovely wife, Deb, who puts, who puts up so much.
Who's put up for twenty years.[1653.12][1653.12](laughter)
We have a room in our house that was dedicated to the Zoning Board of Appeals.[1657.83][1657.83](laughter) Files, and so, yeah, she was my inspiration and always, always backed me up all the time.
Yeah, great. So, go ahead.
What does it become now?
Uh, that room? I don't know.[1670.12][1670.12](laughter)
Ask Debbie.
Yeah, she can have it back now.[1673.83][1673.83](laughter)
Yeah. So congratulations. And if you wanna come up around this side, we'll do a quick picture. And we also have a card from the board. Why don't we do it in front of the flag?
Okay.
It'll be easier.
(laughter) That's a very nice picture with you guys in the corner. Nice. That's a nice picture.
So, and we do actually have guests here for one more presentation, so I'd like to entertain a motion to move up item 5B1, which is gift acceptance from Allied Republic Services.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? I'll invite you up as well, right to the table here, and, you can come up here.
That's a very nice picture with you guys in the corner. Nice.
So, and we do actually have guests here for one more presentation, so I'd like to entertain a motion to move up item 5B1, which is gift acceptance from Allied Republic Services.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? I'll invite you up as well, right to the table here, and, you can come up here. Yep, that's why I figured you'd both be comfortable up here. Good evening. So I understand that you have a gift for the town.
Two very difficult acts to follow, but yes, we do have, we have something here. Not quite as much sunshine as the previous two, but first and foremost, my name's Bruce Stannis. I am the Municipal and Government Affairs Manager for Republic Services. I have my counterpart of mine, John Clifford, who's my municipal services manager. Firstly, I'd like to say on behalf of the board, town manager, and the board of health, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity tonight. Secondly, and most importantly, we want to certainly let you know how thoroughly we've enjoyed the last two years of our business partnership, and certainly looking forward to a continued relationship in the coming years or so. And I think I said last time I did a presentation, that a business partnership, a true business partnership means a, means being a good community partner. And I think in the spirit of that, we've come today with our annual community partnership funding program for the town of Auburn, which includes some funding for the Summer Concert Series, the Pappas Center, and the Senior Citizen Center. So having said that, we'd like to thank you. Checks are here.
Great. So, just for the record, so we can make the motion to accept a gift from Allied Republic Services in the amount of $1,800 for the Summer Concert Series, the amount of $750 for the Pappas Recreation Complex, and the amount of $500 for the Senior Center. Is there a motion?
To accept with gratitude and send a letter? Gratitude as well?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? And one more photo out.
And thank you so very much. Thank you.
I can see her.
Thank you. Great, thank you, and thank you, Auburn.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you very, very much.
What a great, what a great meeting. So, while we're getting ready to go, I just want to, you know, just follow up and say, you know, it's, we do have some great, you know, business partners here, and, you know, the Summer Concert Series, the events at the Pappas Recreation Complex, events at the Senior Center, just all wouldn't be possible without the assistance from these business partners, so thank you very much.
Through the chair, if I may, I know there will be another item for another acceptance, but with the donations that we've been receiving from the businesses, I believe we have nearly fully funded an entire 12-week Summer Concert Series this year, which is incredible. And the series does start in June, and the calendar's online, and we've just got some tremendous performers, so we are grateful to our corporate partners for making this possible. It adds to the quality of life in the town of Auburn, and it's a great opportunity for the businesses to have the employees come, and a great opportunity for the residents. So, on behalf of the administration, we're just thrilled working with them. Great working relationship with Allied, as well as our trash holler, they do a great, great job.
Okay, thank you. So, the next item is communications, and I won't read it all, but we do have correspondence from Thomas Kohan, from Charter Communications, and, you know, the gist of it is, this is to inform you that Comcast Corporation has decided to terminate its merger agreement with Time Warner Cable and its related transactions with Charter Communications. As a consequence, there will be no change to the cable service provided in your area. Charter, through its one of its subsidiaries, will continue to hold a cable franchise in your community. So I don't believe there's any action that the board needs to take on this?
Through the chair, that's correct. If you recall about a year ago, we started the public hearing process in anticipation of this happening, and since it's no longer happening at this point, there's no action that needs to be taken.
Great. Is there anything on that? Okay. So, moving on to board of selectmen, general items. We did have a one-day beer and wine license at St. Joseph's Parish Center for May 16, and we did receive a communications today, just reporting that they weren't able to sell enough tickets, so they're withdrawing their application. So there is no action needed to be taken on that. I'm sorry? So, under gift, we're back to gift acceptance. And we have from Lisa and Robert LaJoy, in the amount of $25, to the Kathleen Sabina Animal Compound, in memory of Dale McGrath. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And we also have from Polar Beverages, in the amount of $2,000, a gift for the Summer Concert Series. Excuse me. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude and send a letter of gratitude.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did you want to be heard on this?
Yes, through the chair. I know Polar was unable to be here this evening, so on their behalf, I just want to thank them. I know they wanted to make sure that the board knew that they also are excellent corporate citizens, they are part of the Auburn community, the business community, and their donation, as the previous one, will enhance our ability to provide a Summer Concert Series and cultural offerings to the residents. So we want to thank them very much for all that they do for the town.
Great, thank you. Moving on, we have gifts to the library from Nancy M. Parslow, in memory of Alice Leroux, in the amount of $10, from Arlene and Glenn Narrow, in the amount of $25, in memory of Alice Leroux, from Janet Nobis, in the amount of $15, in memory of Alice Leroux, and the American Legion Post 279, and that is a, well, let me just take those first three, in memory of Alice Leroux. Is there a motion to? Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And we have to the library, from the American Legion Post 279, in the form of goods, and it's a U.S. flag, in the amount of, in the value of $75, and it's a U.S. flag to replace the library's torn flag. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept with gratitude. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And we have from the Department of Developmental and Inspection Services, from Todd Lemon, in the amount of $20, and it's a donation to the Auburn Animal Shelter, towards a purchase of leashes and collars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next item we have is proclamations, and we have a request by Mr. Carpenter for a proclamation for Town Clerk Ellen Gabry, so that it can't be presented at a future meeting. Mr. Carpenter, did you want to say anything else?
Well, I mean, it's self-explanatory, as we know. A week from tomorrow, there is an election, and Mrs. Gabry has decided to retire after many years of service, both as town clerk and assistant town clerk. So she's, she's served a very long time in the office, and it's, in my opinion, right and proper that we acknowledge her and we invite the former clerks back. I know at least one is still in town, so that we can honor her.
Did you want to make that in form of motion?
That would be my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Simoneon abstained. We have town manager items.
Madam Chair, before we move to that, I should have included the moderator. I know we have a few former moderators who may have worked with Mrs. Gabry. I would like to make a motion that we invite the current moderator and any former moderators that may have served with Mrs. Gabry as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained from Mr. Simoneon. Back to town manager items. A request from the Police Department for a board vote to authorize and accept a grant. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair. This is a grant that the Police Department had applied for, for, I believe this is some public safety classes, and I believe also child seats. No matches required, and the amount of 17, excuse me, $17,500.
If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we authorize and accept grant funding from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Highway Safety Division, for FY 2016.
And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. And then we have a vote to authorize and accept competitive FEMA grant for emergency management and CERT. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair. This is a grant that each year the town has applied for. This year, I have to say, due to the extraordinary efforts of our Emergency Management Director, Roger Bellhumer, we have received formal certification of our LEMPC, which is our Local Emergency Management Planning Committee, and Mr. Holstrom, now a selectman, prior to that, was the Emergency Management Director, and he actually started this process back when he was the Emergency Management Director. So, I want to thank Mr. Holstrom and now Mr. Bellhumer for all the work that he's done to get us to this point. As a result of getting that certification, we qualify to apply for competitive funding through the SHSP slash CCP program, which is a NEMA program, which funnels through from FEMA, and it is primarily focused on CERT teams, citizen cooperative teams. In your packet, we sent to you, actually, the SEF, and it just sent you the application. The application's not due until May 31st. We found out about this after the last board meeting, so the meeting to find out about this was on April 29th in Holden. Mr. Former Chief Bellhumer attended, and found out that we are eligible to apply for up to $5,000. We met this afternoon with our Emergency Management Director and Mr. Joe Shannett, who is on our CERT team, as well as our LEMPC, to talk about what it is we'd like to do for an application. And what we have come up with is that we will be applying for approximately $5,000. We have to wait until we get the final costs of this equipment from a company that we contacted that's on the state bid list, and it does take them several days to put their package together to give to us. So unfortunately, we can't provide the grant to you until such time that we get the specific quotes that are going to be required. But what we're looking to do is purchase equipment that will enable CERT members to use the radios that we actually purchased for them through another grant, to have their own radio channel. So basically, right now, when CERT members use their portable radios, and they are interoperable, they can communicate with DPW, Police and Fire, but it's on the police and fire frequency. So they're using the same frequency, which is, is not desirable, especially in the case of an emergency. So this equipment would, and it would be a repeater system, which includes antennas and cables, and a duplexer, licensing and installation of this equipment, which we put on a building. It would provide them with their own frequency to enable CERT to still have interoperability with our emergency and public safety and public works crews, but to have their own frequency, so they're not interfering on the radio frequency that we need to use in the case of an emergency. So we think it will make a good application. There is no match required on this, and since the maximum amount we can apply for is $5,000, we're asking the board to allow us to apply for a grant in the amount of up to $5,000, to be determined once we get the quotes in from the state bid list.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we vote to authorize and accept competitive FEMA grant for emergency management and CERT of up to $5,000.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. The next item is a request of the board of selectmen for approval of the Community Choice Power Supply Plan, excuse me, as put forth by the town manager. Mrs. Jacobson.
Through the chair. In your packet, on Friday, we provided to you a, I will call it a draft aggregation plan that was submitted to us from Colonial Power Group. I believe it came into our office on Wednesday. There, inside this aggregation plan, you will see that there's an entire process on page one of all of the different steps that need to be taken for municipal aggregation. So this is a follow-up to the meeting, I believe, the last meeting we had, where we talked about hiring Colonial Power as our aggregation consultant. I did sign that agreement on Friday with them, Thursday, Friday with them, so they are officially our consultant. We were working with them prior to that, so they could get this plan to us. We are trying to fast-track this, because the process at the state can be cumbersome. We're hoping it will be quick. Colonial Power has a lot of experience, they have a lot of major clients in other municipalities, and basically, these municipal aggregation plans are somewhat boilerplate. They add in the specific information on the specific community, and I point to something in here that we asked them to include, which would be that whoever the supplier is, provide a certain amount of funding on a percentage basis to the town to continue to fund a energy manager. We've looked, and we see that other communities have done that. It would be a great way to fund the energy manager position, which right now is grant-funded. When that grant expires, we don't have a funding source for that. It's a critical position. Our energy manager, Eric Lesperance, does a tremendous job. He's part-time. He's managing all the green community grants, he's managing a lot of different work under the supervision of Matt Genoit, who's our town planner, who's clearly been extremely involved in this, and Matt has a lot of experience in this. So, and all of those positions fall under the Department of Developmental Inspection Services, under which Darlene Coyle, who's also here, is the director. So there is an enormous process that has to be followed. So what we wanted to do tonight was just get that plan into your hands. There'll be, what we'd like to ask the board is if you would just, I think you probably have to just take a vote to have a public hearing. I would tell you, a public hearing is not required. What's required is that the public has access to and can actually see this plan. So we posted this plan on our website on Friday. We created a separate page called Municipal Aggregation, it's on the homepage of the town's website, and this plan will be on it, as far as a notice of a public hearing. Any other information related to municipal aggregation, we wanted the public, the residents and the businesses to have one place to go for this information. If we hold a public hearing as part of the board of selectmen meeting on the 26th, which is a Tuesday, because Monday's a holiday, excuse me, we thought that that would be just an extra step to take, to let the public know that this plan is out there, ask any questions, and bring Colonial Power in here to answer any specific questions. Again, it's not required, we just thought it was an extra step in gaining the public input on it and being able to answer any of their questions. And again, this is an opt-out program. Every municipal aggregation plan that we looked at was an opt-out program. There'll be plenty of information as we go through the process to residents on how to opt out, and I believe Matt Genoit mentioned last time, if a resident or a business opts out, it doesn't mean they're prevented from opting back in at a later date. So it's a great opportunity, we are doing our best to fast-track it. We will be sending the letters per year vote to our legislative delegation, as well as to the governor, and we have also outreach to the Secretary of Environmental and Affairs, Matt Beaton, who was here last week, and our Colonial Power had an opportunity to talk to him. I was at the same meeting and able to speak to him and just mention that this would be coming forth. As well, I do serve on the statewide Green Community Committee, and our meeting just so happens to be this coming week at Union Station, they move it around the state, and I asked to put on the agenda municipal aggregation, because I'd like the committee to talk about what could be, in my opinion, could be a better expedited process, and maybe DPU and DOER can understand from a municipality's standpoint how hard it is to get these applications through the process, and the longer it takes, the longer it's going to take us to get a supplier, and we really want a supplier onboard by the time people start signing up for their winter energy bills. So we are doing everything we can to try to expedite the process. Everybody's been extremely receptive, great to talk to, so hopefully, if the plan that's being submitted, you know, it may, it may need some tweaks or revisions as we go through this process in the next two weeks, but the basic gist of the plan is there, and DPU and DOER have approved an almost identical plan in other communities, again, including a city as large as Lowell. So Colonial Power is hoping that because it's gone through the process before, and the same attorneys have reviewed it, that hopefully this will get reviewed in a timely fashion. So that's the process right now. Again, page one does show everything that needs to happen in the steps, and this plan is prepared by Colonial Power, and they will be here to answer any questions. I guess my suggestion would be, in the interim, if you have anything that you want clarification on before that meeting, if you could let me know, I could reach out to them, so they have the answers ready for you that night. And it's not that we have to have your vote that night, although I would tell you, we would like to have your vote that night, because the sooner we get this application to the state, the quicker that clock starts ticking on getting our approval process underway.
Great. So is there a motion to authorize the scheduling of a public hearing on Tuesday, May 26th, for the Community Power Choice Power Supply Program?
Make that motion.
And that would be at 7:05 PM. So is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Holstrom.
I think it's very important to the chair that we do have this public hearing. I had a chance to look through-
I had a chance to look through this over the weekend, and there is, there's a lot to it, and I think with somebody here to come in and explain exactly what the process is, or what the program is, what the savings is. It's, there's a lot going on with the electricity now and distribution, and rates are going up, and I think that if we can have somebody come in to explain exactly what is going on with this, how we opt in, how we opt out, what the costs are going to be, what the program is in the whole, I think it's very, very important to seeing that the town is going to be looking at this, not just the municipal government side, the whole town. So I think that, yeah, it's definitely worthwhile to do that, and I would support the hearing.
Mr. Carpenter?
Just a question. Has the Alternative Energy Committee had a chance to review this?
Through the chair, no, they will be, it has been posted on Friday, and they will be contacted tomorrow. I didn't want to contact them until we had a vote of the board this evening, but tomorrow morning, we actually have the notice all set to go, so we just have to launch it to the committee members to let them know that you have now voted to have a public hearing. And again, it is, the information was posted on Friday with notifications to the public that it is available, but they will be notified tomorrow.
I'd just like to suggest that we send them this and ask them to meet and make a recommendation at the public meeting.
Through the chair, just so I'm clear, do you want to have a joint meeting, have them post a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen? I think for them to make a recommendation at a, or are you asking for them to meet prior to it?
Two weeks to meet, they could meet.
And then?
I'm happy to have, I'm happy to have a joint meeting, I think they certainly, they put a lot of effort into the process, so, but I would like them to be able to have a chance to review it, give us their, any ideas, anything that they may want to?
Through the chair, we can make that recommendation to them. They may want to hear the presentation before taking a position on it, because they may have questions of Colonial Power. So that would be, I leave that completely up to the committee, if they're ready to vote to make a recommendation that the board accept it. The board does have to vote to accept this as part of the process, the Board of Selectmen. So, you know, we can reach out and contact the committee and see if they want to take such a position prior to the public hearing, or if they just want to attend the public hearing and learn about the plan, and then go back in.
I'll make a separate motion, that way we can do this and keep it clean.
Okay. So the motion is to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, May 26th, at 7:05 PM, for the approval of the Community Choice Power Supply Plan. It's been duly seconded. Is there any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Mr. Carpenter, did you have something else?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen send a request to the Alternative Energy and Wind Turbine Committee, asking them to meet with us that night in joint session on this aggregation plan. And if we can send a copy to them ahead of time, just so they'll have a chance to look at it.
So the motion is to invite the Wind Turbine and Alternative Energy Committee to a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen at 7:05 for this presentation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just.
Mr. Simoni?
So, because the comments that the Town Manager made, so essentially, even if we invite them here, there's, I mean, obviously, we can't compel them to do anything, and I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even try, but even if they do agree to a joint meeting or, they still may not have a position even after reviewing the presentation.
Through the chair, my hope would be that they would, by inviting them here for a joint meeting, they could also hear the presentation, and by having a joint meeting, they could then vote that evening to recommend to endorse it to the Board of Selectmen.
Do you know if they have anything scheduled prior to that, or?
I don't believe they have any.
Okay. All right.
So the motion is to invite them in, and then they can set their agenda and see fit whether they want to put a vote on their own agenda.
Yep.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Did you have anything else for Town Manager items?
Uh, no.
Okay, great, thank you. There are no tabled items. Under Board of Selectmen member items, we have a request that a policy be adopted regarding presentation materials for large items such as budget issues, audit reports, et cetera, that members be provided materials at least one week prior to a presentation being made. Mr. Carpenter?
Yes, this is something that I brought up when I first was elected to the board, and it's been an on and off type of thing, where we had a audit, and there wasn't a question from the board. I mean, I got it on a Friday, and I did notice that the executive summary was made out in March. So for me, you know, a budget, is that fairly thick, and it'd be good so that if Mr. Casanova comes in and makes a presentation, we can actually ask him some questions, because we'll have had a chance to look through the material. Same thing with the auditor, it'd be nice to have an opportunity to digest it. It's entirely, obviously, up to the board, what they want to do. There might be other items that members would like a little more notice of, these are just two that popped into my mind, so.
Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I would agree with him to a point. There are some issues and some things that come forward that is, we've got to get them in, turn them around, and send them right out, and tonight, one of these is the Emergency Management Agency's grant. This was just processed through, and the grant was just given to us tonight, just so we could take a look at it, and they want to get going on this. So it's, we have another week's time to do things like that, and I think we would, that would be like a as-needed basis. I don't think we can do that for all documents. Audits, we possibly could do that, which wouldn't be a problem, because that's a report of, that's a resulting report. But as far as the budget goes, the budget, town meeting will get the budget before it goes to the annual town meeting. However, the budget process starts in January, we all do receive a copy of the budget, and we are able to go to finance committee meetings, and also that our CFO gives us our presentation of the budget before that process begins. So we are, we know what's been, the department heads are asking, you know, just the finance committee and the town manager's recommendations after that process is done, and we will get that for town meeting. So it's a process to go through, and I think on a case-by-case basis, we could do that, but I don't think we can do that in all cases.
And that's why I only have two items. I didn't say that we needed it for every occasion. I simply mentioned two things. I think the budget, to have the CFO take the time to make a presentation and have not one member ask a question, I don't think that reflects positively on the board. It does not make me feel comfortable getting something, a final document, two days before. So to me, it's about not only respecting his time and people who take the time to do these presentations, so that when they come before us, they actually have an opportunity to have a discussion. So that's, that's why I brought those two. And obviously, we're talking a year out, so it's plenty of time to work out whatever bugs that might come in. I'm certainly not saying that we need our packets a week ahead of time. But those are two items that are, I think, fairly important and significant, and there are many others that I think we need more than two days' notice. But again, it's up to the board what policy they wish to adopt.
Okay, well generally, if we're going to adopt a new policy, what we've, the past practice has been to send it to the subcommittee to create a policy, and I do serve in that subcommittee, and I'd be happy to look into this, keeping in mind that the agenda is posted on Thursday, the packets go out on Friday with materials included in that on Friday, and if we were to hold something because we needed it a week prior, then it would technically be held for another two weeks till the following meeting. So happy to look at the logistics of getting these out and not interfering with the process of providing packets to members on a Friday, and the agenda is open until Thursday morning, till items come out. Mr. Holstrom?
I would agree, but I guess one of the things that has got to be understood, that when we get the budget, the initial budget from the CFO, and he gives us our presentation, we are being presented it for the first time before the process has even begun. The process, as presented to us, is we take from what the CFO has given us, whatever presentation, whatever budget there is, and we say, yes, the Board of Selectmen transfer it to the finance committee for their work. We can ask all the questions we want, but there's going to be a lot of questions and a lot of changes, a lot of revisions made during that process, so I don't know if to get that a week or two weeks in advance would help us out with the presentation with the CFO. It would help us out if it was before the annual town meeting, but I think as presented, the CFO gives us a presentation of what the Town Manager and the CFO has put together, and then we vote as a committee, as a board, to go to the finance committee and let them start that process. So possibly for the town meeting, but not for the initial, and again, it's for logistics, and it's just my thought.
Okay. So Mr. Carpenter, is your motion to have the subcommittee look into drafting a policy regarding presentation materials at least one week prior to the presentation? Would that be your motion?
It would.
Is there a second on the motion?
I don't know if Steve wants to.
Okay, I'll second for discussion.
Mr. Simoni?
Well, I, I think that, I think that Mr. Carpenter's request certainly is valid, and I, if we get the, if we get the budget a week in advance, there may be a relevant question here that would possibly facilitate something in the budget, or something caught, whatever it is. But I, I mean, to just say, we're just going to get it and look it over and transfer it, I mean, that's not really what we're here for. So I, I mean, and this, this isn't the first time that this has been requested. I know that in the five years I've been here, it's been brought up a couple of times before. So I fully support it, because I've supported it in the past as well.
Well, I'll support it to have the subcommittee look into drafting a policy.
Yeah, and I want to make, I'm not asking for a packet, I'm asking for a document. I'm not asking for the staff to give me a packet a week ahead of time. The budget is done well before they come to see us. All I'm asking for is a binder that I'm going to get on a Friday, I'm asking for it a Thursday before. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a packet a week early or everything written in stone at the start of the year.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Is, are there any other member items? Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I just, three quick things, and I'm actually gonna, two of them I had conversations with the Town Manager, and unfortunately, I didn't have time. They're really, they're really just informational than anything else. So the first thing, the first thing I just want to bring up, because I'm, I'm actually surprised at how many people, and I think, I think there was actually a communication from a department within the town on this, maybe even from the police department, I'm surprised at how many people have not heard about this IRS scam that's targeting people to get money, and I'm not sure if something came from the town or not, but it's been in the news a lot. And I just, I just wanted to bring it up so that, you know, it could reach as many people as possible, as quickly as possible. Because I did receive a call from these people back in the fall. They're belligerent, they're angry, and they are, they can be very scared of someone who doesn't have a clue. They're targeting people, especially senior citizens, it's been in the news, and I just happened to have a conversation with a few people, and a couple other people were asking, never heard of it, so whatever, I just thought I'd bring it up for the sake of hopefully saving someone from getting scammed. The other two items, I received some phone calls and communication from some folks. One person actually sent me a copy of the letter, which I forwarded to the Town Manager, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna let the Town Manager speak to both of the things for, again, for an informational point of view, because apparently, there was a letter that went out to some folks up on Rochdale Street about some trees being cut down, and people were just kind of caught off guard, didn't know what it was. I got a couple of phone calls, I didn't have any answers. I called Julie, we had a discussion about it, she has information. And the second one, which I also had a question about, so I'm glad people asked, was regarding the driving range not being open, so I'm gonna ask the Town Manager to comment on both of those things, because it will provide information quickly, again, to folks who have asked questions about it. So, thank you.
If I may then, the first question, I will go to, as Mr. Simoni said, he contacted me because he had been asked questions by a resident, and he shared the letter with me, who received a notification from a David Pappas, who is the owner of property at 430 Rochdale Street, and the notification to the Butters was sent that there would be some tree cutting going on. So we looked into it, and the project is called a diameter limited harvest, excuse me, a diameter limit harvest, or DLH. It's essentially a project that cuts trees for lumber stock. So I'm reading my notes here, because I want to make sure I get it all. It is under the state jurisdiction of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, so DCR. So hence, the notice of intent was received by the Butters from DCR. We contacted DCR to see if we could get any more details on the project, we've reached out to them a couple of times, still waiting for additional information. But we did speak to somebody at the state as well, who explained that there are restrictions on how many trees can be cleared per acre, based on how many trees are located within each acre. So while most applicants are looking for 10 to 12-foot stock, they're able to remove 2-inch to 32-stalk, or larger, depending on the species of the tree. So the maximum amount that can be clear-cut is 25 acres. We contacted David Pappas of SDC Realty, who's the property owner, to ask him about the project, and he echoed the project details that were provided to us from the state, adding that it's an old farm site that his family intends to reactivate. The aerial photography through our office shows 120-acre site with considerable amount of uplands, that includes some large terraced fields that are previously used for farm activities. He said that he hopes to make some money to revitalize the farm by selling the lumber. So therefore, he goes through this process through DCR to get the approvals. There is an item on the Conservation Commission this week related to this, related to this item, I believe it is submitted to the state through, excuse me, to the Conservation Comit Commission by the state, but through notification. It's my understanding that the local Conservation Commission doesn't have jurisdiction over it, so I think it's an informational item, not a vote item. But we are still awaiting more information from DCR, but that's what's happening. Mr. Simoni did see the letter that one Butter received. The notification process, according to Mass. General Law, requires that all the Butters who bought that property, and it is a large property, so quite a few Butters probably got it. The tree cutting was supposed to begin that Friday that you and I spoke, so I think that was a week ago, Friday.
Yeah.
I don't know if that has started, but if anyone does hear it, then that is likely what, what this is about. And it is under the control of the state, and there are strict regulations for projects of this type.
Did you have a third item, Mr. Simoni?
Just the, the other question I was about the driving range not being open, so.
Correct.
I also spoke to the Town Manager about that as well.
Yeah, so this afternoon, Mr. Simoni contacted me.
Nope, that's fine, all the Butters up there should, you know, if anyone hears this, at least you know what's going on, and.
Correct, and it is on the Conservation Commission agenda this week, I believe it's an informational item, not a vote. Through the chair, this afternoon, Mr. Simoni contacted us, and interesting, maybe about an hour before that, someone else in our office got a call about that, because it's the time of year and everyone wants to go out and hit golf balls. And the question is, what's going on with the driving ranch down in the Water District? So just so everybody knows, the Water District actually owns the land that the driving range is on. So they had received a grant from the state to do some testing, some well testing, because there were some, a need to identify additional well sites. Some of those testing sites are actually on the land of the golf course, and it's just a matter of testing for the water and some other issues that they're looking at through this grant. So they could not have the golf, the driving range, open while there was still equipment there. They got the grant in April, they couldn't actually get the equipment onto the land to do the testing, because we still had snow on the ground in April, and it took a while to get through the frozen ground. So that delayed the testing, and it also delayed the, they're trying to time it all with the RFP for a new, for an operator of the driving range. It's my understanding that there is a five-year contract, that five-year contract is expiring, so they had to put it up to bid again. So the bids were due in at 2:00 this afternoon, and this evening, the Auburn Water Commission was going to be looking at the bids, and if they were, they received a qualified bid, hopefully, they'll be making a bid award this evening, assuming the bids meet all the criteria that were advertised in the RFP. So I was told by the Water Commission, by the Water District, that they do intend to open the golf course, and it should be soon. They just have to get this contract authorized in other way.
Great.
There you go, thank you.
Are there any other member items? Is, is there any public comment? Mr. Page?
Good evening, Wayne Page, 90 O'Carman Road. I tried to make it here early tonight for their proclamation that you give Dennis Natoli, but I was at a school committee. but I was at a school committee prior to it, and I couldn't get here, but I just wanted to express my feelings, how Dennis Natoli did such a good job on the ZBA. He knew the bylaws. You could almost ask, just turn around and ask him, Dennis, Dennis, and he'd come right out with it. And he was just so knowledgeable. He helped teach me when I was beginning on the ZBA, and I'm sorry to see him go when he left and prior to that, but I just want to let him know, and hopefully, he watches this, that I am so thankful for the intelligence this man knows about the zoning board issues in the town of Auburn, and how much he has helped me and many others, and I would like to say, while, while I'm talking about thanks, I would like to thank Marsha Ocasek.
She was here?
Yeah, she told me she was going to be here. Like I said, I was hoping to try to get here, but I was at a school committee meeting, and I asked her to say something to Dennis, but then I had a chance at least to come up and say something about him. I think he did this town great honor and always stuck by the bylaws, and he's a tremendous, tremendous teacher, and I really don't think you'll see anybody as knowledgeable as he is. You may someday, but at this point in time, I don't see it, and I just want to thank the board for acknowledging him, and I'd like to thank him myself for all the knowledge he gave me. Thank you.
And I'm sure he appreciates your kind words. Is there any additional public comments? We have the minutes of November 10th, 2014. Are there any corrections or omissions?
I have a comment. That was the minutes of a meeting that was a long drawn-out night, and it was, there was a lot of detail, a lot of discussion, and.
11 pages?
Yes, and I want to say thank you, Sharon Kwiatowski, for, for work, because it detailed the meeting perfectly, and I have no questions, no comments, and thank you, Sharon.
Great. The chair will accept them as written. Is there a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.